I wouldn't recommend it. I did that once.
Boy, like a three hour lapse?
Didn't go well. Two this time of year. What's making better? Still struggling?
I went to the cemetery.
No.
You started getting those ads too?
Is water. It's like instead of animation, it's watermation. It's aquamation. Something like that. It's less. Anyway, it's less expensive. I don't think I want. But it doesn't matter. Well, that's, yeah, it's more expensive. But yeah, there's a place on the coast and they'll even bury your stuff in the.
Well, I think they grind you up first. I don't know.
Brought you up first. Well, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mayor Grover isn't here this evening, and so you are stuck with me. And for the sake of everyone who is here in our audience, I was wondering if maybe we could just get the council and planning commissioners that are present to go ahead and state our name and then it's on the record as well as people might not know each other. So go ahead. Mark, you want to start?
All right, Mark Postuma.
Danielle LaBarre.
Jason Nizaro.
Jacqueline Belloc.
Ben Spartsels.
Paul Schmidt.
Teresa Overhauser.
Ron Valencia.
Dan Turbeville.
David Early.
Thank you. Then it's all yours. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor. We're sitting here. We're pro temp council members and planning commissioners. Today, we have a joint planning commission, city council workshop on the twenty 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 six twenty four six comprehensive plan. The focus of tonight is to really discuss the survey results that happened this fall. Recap on the open house and then discuss some discuss some vision scenarios for how we move forward. With that, I'd like to welcome Ryan Hughes. He's with Nexus Planning Solutions and he's our consultant.
And Ryan, may I ask, would you prefer for everyone to sort of hold their questions to the end? Would that be the best way to do that?
That would be, that would be great.
Okay.
Kind of share kind of overview.
Thank you.
Talk about it. How do I go into the presentation format? There we go. Great. All right. Great. Can everybody hear me? Online as well. If you have any issues, please feel free to, I don't know, raise your hand or comment if that's available. Let me know if there's any issues with the audio. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Ryan Hughes with Nexis, Nexus Planning Services. We are a consulting firm, small boutique firm based in Spokane, working with a variety of communities throughout Eastern Washington on comprehensive planning, but we also specialize in other types of planning, development administration, sub area plans, economic development, et cetera. Tonight, as you all know, the subject of our discussion is the twenty twenty six comprehensive plan for Cheney. The format, and I'll just sort of get into the intro here, the format of this is we're going to give you just a sort of a a brief introduction, an overview of of Growth Management Act and a bit of the framework that State of Washington suggests or supports local jurisdictions in their comprehensive planning efforts. Talk a little bit about urban growth areas. As Brett mentioned, we want to share with you some of the results of the community engagement activities. That's been part of this project that we started back in, oh, wow, it's been a few months, July, August. And then we are going to spend the majority of our time together in a group exercise, but I would love to take your questions in more of a sort of informal Q and A perhaps at that transition period before we go into our workshop area. So at the, at the close of the of the presentation, Kylie will be helping us transition into what we're going to do at these tables. So we're going to invite council members to join at the, at the the tables here as well as members of the public. I've got an extra spreadsheet that we can work, we can set up and we got more chairs, I believe, in the hallway there. There we go. Oh, too far. So again, I forgot to introduce Kylie. Kylie Jones is also with us, our Dura Engineering. And she is a senior planner with, with our Dura, and she's a part of the consulting team for the comprehensive plan. So how do we, how do we begin this? How do we start this? We will not be asking you to make any decisions tonight. We're not going to ask you, you know, to, to, to vote on anything. We're not going to ask you to reveal, you know, if you are for the Chiefs or the Eagles. We're not going to give you, you know, you're not going to have to make any decisions, but what we're going to be asking you is for your collaboration, is for your participation, your discussion with your fellow residents, your fellow community members on how to make the policies that make up the City of Cheney's comprehensive plan. How do we make them better? How do we support the, the project going forward? So again, I'm sorry, keep going forward. What is a comprehensive plan? Comprehensive plan is, is a vision for the future, and I like to think about it as something that we're planting a seed for the future, right? These are, this is a twenty year plan. This is a twenty year outlook. Love that we have some, some young folks in the, in the audience tonight because really we're making decisions, we're making, we're having discussions that are going to benefit the future of the community. And it really is, you know, not something that we see overnight. Policy discussions are not an overnight or, or an immediate decisions. There, there are ways of behavior, there are ways of making decisions that will affect and benefit the, the community in the future. So Cheney's comprehensive plan functions both as a guiding vision and an overarching policy document. So we, we often reference state law, which is, comes out of the revised code of Washington. This is the statute that, that, that created or authorized comprehensive plans in the state of Washington. All cities and counties are required to plan for their futures. Comp plans typically are updated every six to ten years, corresponding oftentimes with your capital improvement planning or capital facilities planning. There are seven required elements or required components of a comprehensive plan. They're listed here. Land use, housing, I said new requirements as part of the housing. We've seen a lot of new requirements over the last a couple of years at the state level. Capital facilities, utilities, transportation, economic development, parks, open space, recreation, and then new to this planning cycle is a new required element that all cities and counties must adopt, which is climate, climate change, climate resiliency. There's a couple of different terminologies. There are also additional optional elements that cities are allowed to or encouraged to, to work through and, and discuss and, and sort of customize to your needs. City of Cheney years ago adopted three optional elements, which are sustainability, technology, culture, and arts. And these are, you know, great sort of vision ideas. Again, they help us with our policy, help us move forward into the future and how we make our decisions regarding all kinds of things. I know this is very small. Nobody's going to be able to read it, and that's okay. The point is that as part of working through an update process, so that's what the state calls this, a periodic update. You know, update every ten years. What's happened over that subsequent time is that the state has adopted new legislation, right? So they've adopted all kinds of House bills, Senate bills, you know, that's made it through the the bill making process. And once those have been adopted at state level and have updated, you know, state code, then that is meant to filter down to local jurisdictions. So part of this process, part of the requirements for doing the update is to evaluate each of these, I want to say eighty-ish updates that we are meant to evaluate and to evaluate them in terms of how does Cheney's current policies, meaning their goals, policies, implementation, actions, how do they sort of relate? So we performed an audit. Our audit showed us that there were many of the existing policies that are on the books currently that are fine, that essentially support those changes that obeyed state law. We've noticed that there are some changes or some items that are currently on the books that, that need to be reviewed. They need to be looked at in terms of how do we, how do we comply? I mean, comply is a very regulatory term. Let's, let's just say align. How do they align more closely with, with the statutes? So this is essentially a summary of our audit. You notice there's a column that says difficult, mild, or mid and easy. Some of the language that has been changed at state law, say around parks and recreation or, or transportation. Sometimes it's just a matter of changing a word in the policy and then we can sort of click and say, yeah, that's, that's good. Other other language, other items that they're asking us to look at require a little bit more conversation with, with the community, a little bit more feedback because we want to make sure that the policies are right, that they are reflective and customized to your needs. So this is just an example of one of those. I would say it falls in that sort of mid mid, mid category of, of difficulty. So what you're seeing in, in, in item F there, which is provisions for the protection of the quality and quantity of groundwater used for public water supplies. So that is a new legislation, new, new language in, in the state, state codes that we need to incorporate into our, our language. So what we noticed in Cheney's code that there are, there's a whole element on natural asset sustainability and related goals. And so what we noticed is that there is some language and you can sort of see it there. It's sustain and improve natural resources through sound planning, operational and implementation practices. So it's sort of a broad goal. It doesn't directly relate to quality and quantity of groundwater. So what we're going to be asking you tonight, so this is sort of the preview of what we're going to be asking you to do tonight is help us get us, get closer to that language. We don't need to sort of adopt cut and paste the state's code. What we can do is, you know, suggest in our existing elements in our existing language, how can we modify that to get us closer to, you know, meeting that, that, the emphasis around quantity and quality of, of groundwater. So I point that out just because that, that is what we're going to be getting into here. And so either through policies or goal language, we can accommodate that.
I noticed there's a hand. Oh, no, that's your, is that your?
That is, that is not my.
I'm sorry.
Oh, is that the cursor?
Is it? Okay. Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you.
So as part of, as part of a regional comprehensive plan update, so like I said, we're, we're, we're in the twenty twenty six cycle, right? All Spokane County jurisdictions, Cheney, Deer Park, Liberty Lake, Spokane Valley, we're all in this two twenty twenty six update cycle. So our, our deadline is June of, of twenty twenty six. That includes Spokane County. So there's meant to be a regional coordination or, you know, cooperation when it comes to how do we plan for this region's future? And part of that is assessing urban growth areas. So this is the language that, that, that provides for urban growth areas out of state code, which as we read it, is based on growth management, population projection. So there's a, there is an official population projection. And once that's done, that is given to the county in, in, in conjunction and discussion with cities. They must determine where the, whether the existing urban growth areas are sufficient to allow for, provide for the population or the projected population within the twenty year period. Furthermore, the county that designates urban growth areas under that particular RCW shall review its designated growth area areas. Finally, as they're working on their comprehensive plan, they have the sort of mandate. It's pretty strong language, shall be revised to accommodate urban growth projected to occur in the county over the succeeding twenty year period. So sort of the moral of this story is, yeah, Cheney, we are also required to do this sort of work where we're projecting what our future population and housing projections are and how do we accommodate that? But when it comes to urban growth areas, because they are within the county, that is a county driven process. And in fact, if you go on the county's website, and I'm not speaking for the county, I'm working with you all. But it's, what I understand is that folks that are within the county areas adjacent to or outside of urban growth are requested if they have an interest in being a part or being considered for any urban growth amendment or adjustment, then they write their letter of interest to the county, submitted that to the county, and they actually have a list of folks that have done that, who have provided their interest request. So as they are reviewing their projected forecast and seeing, you know, how do they need to adjust these areas, these urban density areas to capacitate or facilitate that future projected growth, then they're allowed to, they'll be looking at those properties in more detail. So I've just got a few more, more slides here and I just, and then I'll, I'll hand it over to Kylie. Actually, we'll have a Q and A and I'll hand it over Kylie. When we did the sort of analysis, and again, this is a back and forth. The county continues to look at their methodologies in conjunction with Department of Commerce to confirm and ensure that their capacity analysis works for, for, for the state, works for the cities that are within their jurisdiction. But when it comes to projecting those, those needs, we have new legislation, which in twenty, I say twenty twenty one, House Bill twelve twenty was adopted, which requires all cities and counties to not only look at that projected population, but look at the housing required of that projected population. And that, that's the way we used to look at it. We would say, well, here's the high, medium, low projections. We will plan based on that. They've gone a step for, further and said, not only are you going to look at that total population growth, but we're going to break down that down by projected income. So we have these income bands or brackets, which are based on the area median income. So one would know that our area median income is, say, X. All the housing units that are needed that are affordable for folks in that one hundred and twenty percent AMI, we've got these numbers. All the units needed for the hundred to one hundred and twenty percent AMI, so we wouldn't consider those affordable. We consider those market rate. We have those numbers. And then as we go down, sort of the income level is area median income, household income. We do that analysis. And when we did that analysis for, for Cheney, it suggests that we, in the twenty year period, we're not able to capacitate or facilitate all of the units required for that less than a hundred percent AMI. So what does that mean? Well, that means during this comprehensive plan process, we need to, per the state requirements, we need to look at our zoning to suggest or to consider how can we facilitate these additional units that will be required over the, the twenty year period? And that's what we, that's what we're doing. That's what these scenarios in the back of the room show how we can facilitate and accommodate that. And really, it's not a big lift, right? Because we're seeing, I don't remember what the, the numbers were, but if we're, if we're building, say, forty, twenty to forty units a year, right? We're going to meet that, that number just, just through the natural course of, of development. But we do need to think about how we can support through our zoning policies, getting us to, to, to those units over the twenty year period. Hey, I'm over my time now. Community engagement. So just talking about our engagement workshop, we had fifty attendees. I hope many of you were there back in December. It was a great, great turnout. We had, previous to that, we had orientation interviews. I'll talk about the summary of that. In addition, we completed three hundred and forty nine community, there were thirty nine responses to the online and paper survey. We also have a website that you can access twenty four hours a day. And some of the topics that were identified in the summary or the interviews, housing needs, growth trends, underutilized vacant land, economic constraints, collaboration with city and others, community identity, infrastructure needs, downtown revitalization, administrative capacity, park screen space. And there's a summary available. If you go to the project website, you'll see the summaries there. Terms of the survey, I brought a few of the survey, survey reports that you can look at. We'll also post that to the website. But some of the things that really popped out to me reviewing that was we had a lot of support for housing affordability generally. We had a lot of support for leveraging Eastern Washington University, support for, you know, retaining the small town feel with, which is so wonderful about Cheney, keeping dollars local and enhancing walkability. What you're not able to see with the, the pie chart there was, there was through the survey, we, we understand that there are and continue to be infrastructure concerns. Now, those weren't specified, you know, what type of infrastructure, but just sort of a general response and reaction, how many folks felt that there were needed improvements. And I'll just speak briefly. When we, we did this, the, the, the open house, we asked folks to sort of grade how well the scenarios that you're seeing back here did in terms of community values. So you know, with the radar chart, you know, what, what, what this helps us do is determine what, what their preferred scenario might be. So we had one, two, and three scenarios. They're described on the boards here, but essentially where people felt the preference were, were either on the, the number three, the final scenario, or sort of that hybrid between two and three. So that really just kind of helped us quantify, you know, where folks thought or how well, how well the scenarios performed. Oh, and with that.
All right. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Can I take this out? All right. Okay, so we're going to ask you all here shortly to join us down in these tables to roll up your sleeves and give us some input on these larger twenty four by thirty six documents. But we found, you know, Cheney comprehensive plan is a great plan. We want to make it even better for you. So with this list of big ideas, these are themes that we heard throughout the engagement. And so this is an opportunity to provide a little bit more of a framework for you to maybe reverse engineer a vision statement and help guide, you know, the goals and the, the policies a little bit better for you to be able to use them all in your work. So I'll just briefly read these for folks who maybe can't see the screen. So some of the big ideas that have cropped up, these are the top ten most popular, most mentioned, whether it be in the community survey or interviews, as Ryan mentioned. So prioritize affordable housing. We may need to add a little bit of specificity to that. And we'll ask you to kind of look over those. Protect and improve open space. Establish transit oriented development zones. Promote efficient land use and infill development. Improve infrastructure and utilities. Bolster walkability, bikeability, pedestrian and road safety. Spur downtown revitalization. Foster collaboration between city, its departments, EW, and the community. Nine is build stronger local economy. And then ten nurture the small town feel, arts and culture. So I think all of you, hopefully, we want to gather some input and make sure that these are the right big ideas. If there's something we missed, we want to know. And so let me pop to the next. Is it this button? Down, down. Okay. There we go. Okay, so I know most of you can't see this, but we are going to ask, and neither can I. So we're going to ask, do you agree, disagree with the big idea? Or does it maybe, is it close? Maybe does it need some adjustment? And then we'll ask, you know, if, if it, if the big idea needs some adjustment, what does it need to be changed to? So this is your opportunity to wordsmith a little bit. And then we want to know, you know, that second, yeah, column or second row is why important? So, you know, if you feel like this big idea is really important, something that should, you know, we just want to know if you have any extra input. And then we're going to talk through some policy gaps, right? So Ryan mentioned there is a little bit of space. There's a little bit of distance. There's a gap between where your policies in some sections, where they sit right now and where they, what they need to be brought up to essentially, not brought up, but changed to meet the GMA, to be in alignment with the GMA, the Growth Management Act and the new requirements. These are the top maybe five or six, seven that we chose tonight to go through with you. We want to understand how important is that policy to you? We have a ranking structure, one through four, one being really important. And then, you know, some notes or reasons. So this is an exercise in how we go about taking that existing policy and bringing it to the GMA standard essentially. So I will walk around and we will, we'll roll up our sleeves. I know there's quite a few people here tonight, so I don't know that we have, I think we have one extra. Community, community feedback. Yeah, okay. And then is that the, I think that's, oh. Okay, there we go. That's the instructions. So ready, set, go. So we'll invite you to come down to the tables here, sit around in a circle and just going to facilitate a discussion about fifteen, twenty minutes, and then we'll have a report out. If you guys, you know, we want to know for the first section, if there's something that just is a fatal flaw. And sorry, was there anything else?
So, so we could get about four people at each worksheet. I think that will sort of fill in. And, and we're going to spend about twenty minutes on the first section, which is number one, which Kylie mentioned, and then we'll sort of give you a whistle or just say next, and we'll have to go on to the second because we want to make sure we're sticking with time. And at the end of that forty minutes, we will ask folks to report out a couple of their observations, their, their suggested changes, or any other sort of major questions that still need to be addressed.
And for the folks online, I guess if you have any input related to this, I'll leave this up on the screen. Maybe you can use the chat and we'll try to moderate the chat as we go here for the next fifteen, twenty minutes. So ready, set, go? Come on, don't be scared. Come on down here. And then we'll see how many more chairs.
I know these are all connected.
Oh, oh, they do. Okay.
Hey, good. How are you?
Off everything?
Oh, I like it.
Sure. I'm round.
I am getting.
I'm just a little short.
Jasper.
You get to write. I think I got it. Get the water off the table.
What did you live in bottle?
I think I got both of it. We go back to big ideas, green, okay.
We've got another worksheet over here that folks. That's it, that's it. Very easy. And then we go into, why is that an important? Exactly, correct, correct.
It does not specify. We looked at your. So let's just.
It's, you got a lot of. Never was so much. It's mainly coming home. That's what's now. The word. If you want.
Going back to that.
Your reads are.
So, how can this company, this business? So. Officially, but like in town, like bike path, like on First Street, right? Like you ride a bike on First Street? It's a highway, you know?
Down, downtown. That's bringing.
Collaborational. That's not just been spoken about. I don't want to, like traffic.
Well, that's like.
Besides. Not the more. I know.
We have.
Okay, if you're ready to move to the next section, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, I think we need to. Find our niche. There's other things, but. There are people in team.
Hi.
It's a place.
Yeah, and I wish.
So, so that would be like. Okay. Yeah, so falling broke. Priority on a scale one to four. So GMA Leo McLees is provide for the protection.
I am unclear.
And if you want to, you want to see the action.
Our. Criteria, I guess.
Are you gonna do some? We recognize. We're still in the. They chose.
So you know what I mean? Maybe from the status. Yeah, we have started. Is this, what do you mean? What's our question? You're a little confused. So that is, um, that is.
We have some, we don't have any.
That's not. Not with the. Some of landowner. To that specifically as landowner. Property owners. No, no.
Yeah, sure.
So is our property, it's right on Paradise.
So this. What is.
That's good.
I feel like the climate ones aren't really important.
I think we've already established that's a priority.
Early.
Just like. We have a downtown center. Same. Like the power is so downtown. You're more like a little walk or the driving a little bit. Two, so yeah, right? Like that is something in our.
That looks crazy and now you're like, wait a second.
I just like to keep the bear a barrier.
Well, while we're waiting to hear about that. Inventory.
I wish we had a. Behind the glow cars.
Share of Tommy Wisehouse.
I remember the accident.
You'd see a permit instead of sale of everything. So that is not. So two of our deficits.
Yeah.
But their purposes. That they pre-secured on the zoning high state for some areas. Um, like downtown allowing buildings to be built higher. Um, which of course would mean that a lot of the buildings that are there will have to come down because they're not structured. Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly. There are no developers that are going to build. I think it's a priority. So. Have to give it a number. I probably put it S two because that's. I think. Focus on the infrastructure. And then. But yeah, this is.
Well, I think that has done to. And that's the development that we have. And I mean, you're saying here. Act revenues. We're just happy, you know? But we don't really have.
It's, it's all income. There's percentages in each band. Well, a hundred, a hundred thousand.
This is a five minute warning. In about five minutes, we're gonna go ahead and report out. So five minutes.
So out of city investors purchasing property within the. Renting. A higher than eighty percent.
We've got retail studies where we have.
So.
I was trying to present for a city. They do. Very. I think they have.
That's. So there are, yeah. You know, policies and the comp plan. So I. Something that needs.
The one thing you can. Need somebody that.
That much multi. I mean, I would like to. We're commuting. But. With the bus. No, I don't think so. I didn't.
It seems like. They're.
I'd say they're not.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you stay in. Cam. Cheryl. No, just stay where you're at and we'll share the. Report here in two minutes. I'm, yeah, two minutes.
All right, two minute warning, two minute warning.
ACDC, AC.
You sent it to me. And I sent it to everybody else. No, it's beautiful and we're doing climate planning for the community.
It is a massive. It's a massive. A lot of. Tiny properties. To. Talking to colleagues. Climate. Planning. Person is developing. They buy.
Right now, like if.
Woo, that was good. Official, okay. What we'd like to do is just go around the room, you guys, uh, we wanna know, um. If there was anything that stood out, it could be from the first section or the second section. If there was anything you just wanna share with the group that you thought was great. You loved it, you hated it, you don't understand, um, we'll get you a comment card for that one, but, um. What do you think overall? Are we on the right, on the right path? So I'll start with this table and we'll go around. And, um, if somebody says your comment. Think of something else to share. Okay. What's your name? That was. Okay, yeah, here. Any big ideas, anything that stood out to you guys just about the whole planning exercise? Um, or something specific that you wanna share with the group?
Well, we thought that the whole thing with the big ideas was kind of, um. Interesting because most of them were like, well, who wouldn't want these things to happen? But the question is, in the details, how are they going to happen? So, um. Yeah, I mean, I think we mostly agreed with them, but again, it's like, how is this gonna happen?
Yeah, yeah, good point, good point. We'll see what everybody else.
That's what they get paid for.
We'll let them figure that out. Um, okay, awesome. That was your group, okay.
Anybody here?
Very similar comment. We, we did also agree with all ten of the big ideas. We thought several of the big ideas were kinda interrelated. Um, we, we use the re wa- re rewrite line to kinda add some of the details. Or context or parameters to some of these big ideas, so. Yeah, we nailed it.
We also agreed with all of them, that we, we do. Those are the top priorities or ideas. Um, I think the one that really stuck out to us was nurture small town feel arts and culture. We were talking about how cities or towns, when they have that, people tend to wanna stay around. They want to frequent shops. And we think that like that actually leads to a lot of these other, um, ideas.
Hi, yeah, so I think our group also agreed with, um, a lot of the big ideas. They, you know, as Margot said, like they're pretty standard, right? No one's really gonna disagree. Um, but I think there were some interesting things like with the, um, efficient land use and how we approach. What that really means, um, given our current like boundary lines for the city. Making sure that we're actually being efficient with that use. Um, yeah, so we also added a bunch of details and then I think, are we allowed to talk about the bottom? Okay, nobody mentioned the bottom yet, so. Um, okay, good. Um, yeah, so we, we thought that, uh, the bottom was interesting, especially with the examples that were given for the, how do we close the policy gaps? So we tried to add a couple notes on again, the housing items because concern, um, that we had, especially with the existing scenarios was around like our low income. Um, communities and the, how we're gonna approach protecting that housing, um, bracket, basically. And so just kinda wanna make sure that they're taken into account. Yeah. Yeah. Any other?
All right, we, we kind of agreed the same way. Mark Postuma, by the way, we liked all ten, but it's, it's in the how. How are we gonna actually accomplish that? One of the things we spent quite a bit of time on was number eight, fostering collaboration between the city and Eastern. And how actually if we did a pretty good job of that or a better job, it would actually help with almost all the other nine. Uh, so collaborating with them would be very helpful. Um, another issue that, that was just from me, but that is under the GMA of housing that's interesting is. Our largest employer is Eastern. They have almost a thousand employees. Seven hundred and eighty-five of them do not live in the city of Ceni-Cheni because there's no housing for them. So large incomes are leaving our city to go live somewhere else. So our businesses are not supported. We don't bolster walkability, we don't spur downtown revitalization, we don't nurture a small town feel, we don't build strong economy, we don't protect and improve up in space, et cetera.
Yeah, and in the closing the policy gap issue, um, we had a, a lot of, a lot of agreement that the proposals for the comp plan. For the, um. The GMA housing is unrealistic, that upzoning the existing high density housing is not going to create the homes for those people. Um, not without destroying, um, our efforts to spur downtown revitalization. Preserve the, the small town feel and nurture our arts and culture and downtown Cheni. Um, yeah, upzoning just doesn't match, match the numbers. Um. Yeah, that's, that's the biggest takeaway from the, the bottom is just the plans in the, the, what's proposed in the comp plan doesn't meet the goals, so.
Can you expand on that? I don't really understand what, what did you mean by that? The plans don't meet the goals, what?
Okay, yeah, upzoning is not going to create the five hundred and ninety-three units for the zero to eighty percent, uh, band. It's just not going to. That's a lot of housing and it's a small area in the scenarios that have been designated for upzoning. It's not going to meet those numbers.
Okay, so just ditto to all the other tables about that these big ideas are good, big ideas. Um, and one thing that we did talk about is that so many of these big ideas could be. Um, that co-housing supports many of them. Um, yeah, and so. Anything else?
Great, we got another comment back here.
Yeah, um, I think one of the things too that we saw with the new, uh, climate change proposals, that that is a big opportunity to, um, partner with Eastern, who is already working on some climate change. And that might be a good opening to, and a fresh opening to actually get our foot in the door with some collaboration with Eastern.
Great, thank you.
So. Kind of building actually on what Bonnie just said. Um, I was actually quite surprised that in the big ideas, none of them really touched on the climate issue. The GMA does. But what was concerning to the community was not our fire season. It wasn't our lack of like water in the area and can we sustain the growth that is being proposed or that we have to maintain based on state standards and stuff? And so I really feel like the priorities need to shift to really figuring out what resources we have to support the things that we want to accomplish in this comp plan. Because that's kinda being left out of the conversation, it seems, so.
Yeah, that's an interesting point on, um, maybe something that maybe the big ideas didn't capture very well or, um, and if, if there are any that can be tailored to incorporate that, I think we should. We'll look further into that and circle back with you guys and we will look through all of your comments, so. Um. Any other, do you wanna talk about next steps?
Brett wants to speak to that, but, um, yeah, so, so what, so where we're at in, in the process, um, we've, we've gone through sort of the initial round of, of engagement, like I said, with the, the interviews and the survey and the open house and, and then this check in tonight. Um, what we would propose to do next is to come back to, to council, um, in, in the spring, essentially, March, April. With a more narrowly defined sort of future land use scenario. So these are scenarios, we're not calling them alternatives on purpose, um, because we wanted to make sure we have these conversations first. Want to make sure that the, the number unit analysis, and that was a great comment, I appreciate that in terms of upzoning, you know, maybe doesn't accommodate or, or accomplish the, the affordable housing goals that we may want to, um, to accomplish. So we need to think about, you know, some, some specificity in our policies and our, in our, in our land use or future land use map because that's in effect how the, um, the local government has control of, right? We're not out building the houses ourselves, but we do have control of the, of the, of the land use policy. So we need to think about how best, um, to, to accommodate that. So what we would propose is that we come back to you in March, April with, um, two alternatives. And then we would ask to, um, have a selection of a preferred alternative. Um, in the meantime. Um, any other comments that come in? This worksheet itself is available online at the project website, which is Cheni Plan twenty twenty-six. So if you wanna do it at home, if you wanna print it out, give it to your neighbor who wasn't able to be here tonight, um, please, you know, participate, bring that in. We'd love to, to see more comments and more, more feedback. Um, we bring that together and we begin, uh, the process of drafting the, the elements. Do we wanna take questions or are we?
Anybody have questions?
Yep, yep, and the, the slides as well will be posted on to the, the project website. Cheni Plan twenty twenty-six.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for your time tonight and for the conversation. Thank you. If you feel inclined to write names on them, you can, but it's all. You know. I know. But I know. It's all about name plus, I'll make sure to put that on your.
Thank you, everyone, so much.